Christian love is respect for the integrity and character of one's neighbor. When the misguided Negro realizes one simple thing, segregation is not based on hate, it is based on Christian love, then will he begin to have some understanding of his conservatives for the neighbors and also some love?
And so she caught up with me and we were skipping along and giggling, having fun. And then her sister caught up with her, her older sister caught up with her, popped her in the head and said, "Don't be walking with that hen, girl," and grabbed her by the scruff of the collar in the back of her coat and dragged her. Felt really bad for her.
In January 1957, hearings were held in the Tennessee State Legislature regarding bills intended to defy the United States Supreme Court by keeping black children from attending white public schools. Lawanda Street was one of those children. You'll hear more from her and others who experienced Nashville's desegregation battle firsthand in this episode of Nashville Retrospect. Welcome to the Nashville Retrospect Podcast. I'm your host, Alan Forkum. I'm also the editor and publisher of the Nashville Retrospect, a monthly newspaper full of old news stories from and new essays about Nashville's past. Our September 2018 issue features original newspaper articles about the first days of desegregated schools in Nashville. To read these accounts yourself and to see more photographs of the events covered in this podcast, be sure to pick up a copy. The September 2018 issue also has many other interesting stories, including an article about the 1978 robbery of the Country Music Hall of Fame and the Webb Pierce Museum across the street, where $3,000 worth of silver dollar coins were pried off of Pierce's Western-decorated convertible. We also have a rare photo of the 1941 blaze that destroyed the Woolworth Building on Fifth Avenue, closing it for a year. And speaking of fires, a 1916 article relates the fire department's desire to replace its horse-drawn apparatus with motorized ones, which they said would save lives and money. In our 1868 section, we have a wide variety of articles, one concerning a well-dressed, drunken woman seen on Market Street, which was then considered "a truly sad spectacle." It makes one wonder what they would think of Second Avenue today. Another 1868 article concerns the successful introduction of velocipedes in Chicago. Velocipedes were early forms of bicycles. And finally, be sure to see a 1970 advertisement for famous Nashville stripper Heaven Lee, who was performing in Printer's Alley. In the ad, she says, "The fewer clothes I wear, the better I breathe." To see article excerpts and photographs from some of these and other stories, visit our Facebook page. You can pick up the latest issue of the Retrospect for only a dollar at local grocery stores and markets. And at NashvilleRetrospect.com, you can order subscriptions and even back issues. So if you're new to the Retrospect or skipped an issue, check out our webpage to see what you've missed over the last nine years that we've been publishing. Recent national rallies by white supremacists, one of which turned deadly, have shown that such racism can still exist openly in America. But not that long ago, it was more common. There was a time in Nashville when the Bible was invoked on Capitol Hill to argue against the mixing of races. There was a time when groups of white protesters yelled at black children as they walked to school. There was a time when a bomb was planted in an elementary school. The year was 1957, and in this special episode of Nashville Retrospect, you'll hear the story of school desegregation from people who were there.
It has been properly brought out that any political action involves moral and spiritual aspects. To that question, I'd like to direct my remarks that segregation and only segregation involves Christian love. Christian love is respect for the integrity and character of one's neighbor. When the misguided Negro realizes one simple thing, segregation is not based on hate, it is based on Christian love, then will he begin to have some understanding of his conservatives for the neighbors and also some love. Through segregation, the Negro may have his own schools, develop his own culture, and his own readers, and realize his own destiny. He is given the opportunity to be himself. To segregate with mutual respect is Christian love. To integrate is a degeneracy of despair that would at once devour thy neighbor and destroy thyself.
That was Carl Kershaw of Nashville, speaking to the Tennessee State Legislature in opposition to black students being allowed into white public schools. He is reacting to the 1954 Supreme Court decision in the Brown versus the Board of Education case. In that landmark decision, the court ruled that state laws establishing separate public schools for blacks and whites were unconstitutional. Until that ruling, having what was called "separate but equal" public facilities was the law of the land.
Plessy versus Ferguson, case of 1896, said Negroes are not harmed if they are giving equal facilities under the Fourteenth Amendment, which said equal protection of the laws. And so many of the southern states decided, "Well, we'll set up separate schools for them." And the federal government, the United States Supreme Court sanctioned that kind of discrimination, separate but equal. The whole country was Jim Crow, really, although in the South, it was Jim Crow the jury, and that is by law. You know, there were codes, state codes and municipal codes that said, you know, you had to ride on the back of trains. You couldn't use this restroom if you were, you know, not white and so on. And so Brown was a case that began the desegregation of the whole American society.
Dr. Bobby Lovett is a retired professor of history and former dean at Tennessee State University. He has written a number of books about the history of African-Americans in Nashville, including one titled, "The Civil Rights Movement in Tennessee."
The Civil Rights Movement is about pushing for equality and the reduction of barriers so that you have the same access to everything as everybody else. Brown versus Board of Education, May 17, 1954, I believe. It wasn't a decision that came all of a sudden. The Civil Rights Movement had been moving on pretty briskly since the New Deal in 1937. So I have to remind people that it wasn't something that the court just came up with and said, you know, "We're gonna reverse Plessy versus Ferguson." But in 1935 to 37, there were people using the NAACP to sue for desegregation of education in Tennessee.
Since blacks were not always given equal facilities, the struggle for equality became about gaining access to white facilities. In Nashville, black attorneys and the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People spent years working to integrate various public institutions, such as state colleges and city golf courses, but with limited success.
When Brown came down to Nashville, Nashville under Kelly Mills Smith, the NAACP in Nashville, and others, Alexander Looby and, of course, Avon Williams, the lawyers, Nashville was ordered, of course, too, to desegregate its schools. And Nashville decided, "Well, we would desegregate, but we will do it grade at a time." In other words, we'll do the first grade this year, we'll do the second grade, third. In other words, if they had been able to stick to that plan, it would have taken until, what, 1969 before you had full desegregation of the schools. But all over the South, not just Nashville, they were resisting Brown through gradual desegregation, one grade at a time. Memphis, where I grew up, was even worse. Although the Brown case ordered desegregation with all deliberate speed. And those words meant, "Do it as soon as possible." But of course, you were trying to change an entire Southern culture. You were trying to change an entire American culture. They started with the first graders because they didn't, we weren't really interested in integrating anyway. We're South. We're right there with Alabama, Mississippi, where they did not want to. But they did want to follow the law. They were just gonna do it as slowly as they possibly could.
In 1957, Lawanda Street Harley was the six-year-old daughter of Serena and Harold Street.
The millennials of that time only believed that white schools had to be better because that was the, that was the general thought, that the white schools had to be better. They got the better books, you know, they had more opportunities. And so therefore, why couldn't my child go to the school right up the street, to the white school, for better education, better opportunities? And that's the reason why the big push to integrate the schools.
Lawanda's parents wanted her to attend the nearby white school, Glenn, even though she would be separated from her older sister, Donnie, who was already attending Megs, then an all-black school in East Nashville.
She was the one that I was connected to the hit Bible. She was the one that made me want to go to school because she had gone there first and left me at home alone, you know, for the first time since I had been born. I was alone. I was without her. And she had gone to school, and she loved it. And every morning, I'd watch her go in. Every afternoon, I'd watch her come back. And I could not wait until it was my turn to go to school.
At Megs, Donnie was attending a school well-regarded in the black community. Her mother, Mrs. Serena Street, who is 90 years old today, recalled why.
You know, the key thing about it, excellent teachers. It matters not if your textbooks are old, maybe some of the pages are missing. But it's the teacher. Megs had excellent teachers, our best.
It was the only job you could get?
Yes.
For black teachers. So the only place black teachers could teach were in the few black schools that were available. And it was a lucrative job. It was an honorable position in our community to be a teacher. And you would have sort of, kind of, arrived if you were a teacher or had a government job, like a mail, the post office. Those were what we call close to half-lutin, just a little bit below being a professor at a college or a doctor or a lawyer than, you know, teachers. And so it was a highly sought-after position to try to get. So you had to be the best of the best of the best to get in that line to become a teacher. So the teachers that we had in black schools were the top students that came out of the colleges.
And that was the case at Megs?
And that was the case at Megs.
Mrs. Street did not raise her children to be self-conscious of their skin color, and when possible, she avoided the issue of racism altogether.
But one thing that happened to African-Americans, our parents protected us from Jim Crow. And we forget that, that they tried to keep us away from it as much as possible. She never told us that we were different.
Yeah, I never did discuss that with them. I guess because of my background, I had been taught that that's not the difference. It's just the color of your skin.
We'd watch Romper Room, which were white children on a, kinda like Sesame Street, a Mr. Rogers kind of show. But it was called Romper Room. And we'd gather every morning for Romper Room, Donnie and I, and play Romper Room with the TV, on the TV.
When they asked me about taking--
To go be on Romper Room.
Be on Romper Room. I was disgusted with them.
She told us that. "It was too far away. Your mother doesn't drive well. It's snowing, and you know I don't drive in snow." I remember the excuses. I accepted them face value. We had no idea it was because they didn't have little chocolate children on Romper Room. It was not to be. So we, in fact, I had this theory that the difference between those children and us was hair color. My hair was kinky because it was a dark, dark black color, and that if you had red hair or blond hair, that was why it was straight. And then my baby sister was born with red--
Hair, right here, let me picture right there.
She was born with this red hair and just blew my little theory to pieces, you know. So that was the reason. But that was my original thought of why I didn't have long swinging hair, because it wasn't a color.
You know, that was not discussed, right, my children.
So we had to make it up. So we quit. We were never told we were different.
Racial segregation and prejudice were commonplace in Nashville, like most of America. Mrs. Street, Lawanda, and Donnie recalled what it was like for black citizens to shop downtown in the mid-1950s.
Mama used to drag us every Saturday. That was her entertainment, so to speak. Her happy place was to go shopping. But she would take us both on the bus early in the morning downtown to shop and try on shoes and look at clothes. Didn't have much money. We were allowed in the attic a lot. You had to go up the steps in the stores to try on hats. You had to go--
When they finally allowed us to try on a hat.
Was it a Rich Swartz or--
You had to go up in some kind of little small area to try it on. And then after that, you know, we'd use oil on our hair. You had to put something on your, on your hair--
A scarf or a net or something?
No, some just gonna make sure that you--
The hair did not touch the hat.
Yeah, right. But I stopped going there. I said, "I don't care if I never ever had." And in the meantime, Dillard's came. No, Harvey's. Yes, Harvey's came, opened it up quite a bit downtown.
We could go to the theaters, too. But we had to go in the theater.
Down the alley.
Down the dark end. And go up the steps.
You remember that? What was the name of that?
It wasn't Crescent's. Paramount.
Yeah, Paramount.
Paramount.
You know, and so people of color had to go down this alley and go up all the steps and sit up stairs and--
In the balcony.
Yeah, in the balcony. That's where it was. I tell that to people, they can't believe it now. Can't believe it. Black and all white, they don't, can't believe it.
On at least one occasion, though, Mrs. Street didn't avoid racism, but faced it head-on by taking her two children into Woolworth on Fifth Avenue for ice cream, despite the fact that blacks were not allowed to eat inside. A white man at the counter was not happy about it.
I bought some ice cream for them. And they sat there. They didn't know what was going on. But the guy, if he could have killed us with his ass, he sat there--
We'd all been standing there, dead.
It was like it was--
Shooting dogs.
But they didn't even realize it. They were just happy because they were sitting on the stools, eating ice cream, weren't aware. But I said, "I'm not gonna take my kids out of here. I'm gonna let them have this pleasure."
Who was eating, who was eating at the--
Yes, this, at the counter.
Tried to stare her down. Really tried to stare her out.
That's what it was. You know, I said, just like dogs. You know, you can imagine just dogs coming and scowling.
I'd be backing--
He tried to stare me down. I said, I ignored him.
Keep in mind, this occurred in the mid-1950s, years before students would perform sit-in protests at the same location. Such white supremacism reached the highest offices in state government. Members of the Tennessee Legislature signed a manifesto openly condemning the Supreme Court's desegregation rulings. And though Tennessee's governor, Frank Clement, was a segregationist, he didn't go as far as to sign the manifesto.
National aspirations kind of forced Clement to be a moderate, rather than to be just a right-wing conservative segregationist as they were, you know, governors were in Alabama and Georgia.
But in January 1957, Governor Clement did introduce to the state legislature his "moderate" segregation program. His bill sought to maintain racially segregated public schools in Tennessee by allowing parents to send their kids to either mixed or segregated schools.
Now, we have before us these proposed administration bills which propose to work within the framework of the United States Supreme Court's decision on segregation. They're good as far as they go. There's nothing in those bills, however, that will prevent a forced-out, actual mixing of the races in schools, buses, parks, swimming pools, other public places such as restaurants, audit rooms, and other places of attendance, and ordered by a federal court.
That was Nashville attorney Sims Crownover, speaking at legislative hearings about the governor's school bills. Pro-segregationists like him argued that the governor's bills didn't go far enough to protect segregation, while anti-segregationists argued that the bills were unconstitutional and immoral. For instance, Dr. A.C. Miller of the Southern Baptist Convention said that by placing one group superior to another, the bills denied the biblical principles that every man is equal before God. A.B. Wren of the White Citizens Council disagreed.
Now, some of the preachers that got up and said something about the Bible tells you so. But let me tell you something. The fishes of the sea, they don't make, you can cut a peckerwood, a jaybird, a wrenbird, if you might say, all in a cage, they'll die before they'll integrate. And so will the catfish in their perches of the sea. They'll die before they integrate. Then the Bible clearly says that he first started segregation. So let no preacher fool you.
A Mrs. Robert Smith brought up what she saw as a more practical concern about possibly sending white students to black schools.
I wonder if many, if any of you have sat in a classroom at Curl High School during the times of the day when the train, the freight trains passed along that avenue. You can hardly hear what is going on in the classroom due to the distractions from the outside. And I'm wondering if it is necessary to bring a child one mile or two miles and a half to Curl High School to be distracted from her occupation by such noises.
And Nashville attorney Robert E. Lillard argued against the bills by invoking the country's founding principles.
I think that the members of this joint committee should join hands to fight the moral cancer of racial hatred, bigotry, and second-class citizenship. Gentlemen, I say with all fairness here that I, for one, am proud of the many learned lessons taught the American Negroes by the white Americans. Among these, never to be satisfied with the conditional freedom of qualified living. In conclusion, may I say that the very soul of the American Negro hungers for the day when he and his posterity can tend to tune to that final patriotic hymn, "My country, hill of thee, sweet land of liberty."
The legislature ultimately passed the school bills, and Governor Clement signed them into law. It remained to be seen whether or not they would withstand a constitutional challenge. In the meantime, the federal court did approve the City of Nashville's gradual integration plan. So the stage was set for the coming fall, when, for the first time in Nashville's history, black children would register for and attend white schools. For the Street family and other families nearby, white and black, the drama would unfold at Glenn School in northeast Nashville.
It was, at one time, North Edgefield, a part of the city of Edgefield. And my parents were both natives of East Nashville, my daddy of northeast Nashville. It's an area very close to Dickerson Road, truly an inner-city neighborhood.
Debbie Esir Cox grew up in the neighborhood around Glenn School, her family having lived there for decades. And what street did you live on? What area, what part of--
I lived on Meridian Street, which today is called Cleveland Park. The area I lived in is called Cleveland Park. And my grandparents lived across the alley from us on Pinnock Avenue. They moved there in 1917. We didn't have air conditioning. In the evenings, we sat out on the porch, so did the neighbors. So you'd saw them. You might walk down the street and sit in their porch swing and talk to them for a little while. It was that kind of a neighborhood. It was a mixed income community. There were very poor people that lived in that area. Doctors and lawyers lived in that area, you know. There were some really nice homes and there were some lesser homes. And it was very diverse as far as economics went. It was an all-white neighborhood. Nearby, there was an all-black neighborhood because neighborhoods were segregated. And so I never thought about it as a child, but I didn't realize even that that black neighborhood was there. But slowly, the neighborhood started to become diverse. It took a lot of years. I've told my daughters before, I actually remember the first time I saw a black person walk down Meridian Street. It was just not an area I guessed black people came into. And I wasn't afraid, but I was very curious, "Who is that? And why are they in my neighborhood?" You know? So I don't know, there was not a lot of mixture of races.
The Street family was one of those on the vanguard of the racially changing neighborhood.
Our neighborhood was a lower-income white neighborhood originally. That was being, what, gingefied? It was turning into a Negro neighborhood, bit by bit.
Well, you know, like I said, we moved in an area that was changing. And generally, after two people of color would come, then the whole thing starts changing, you see. When I would come out of my house, and at that time, you would hang up your clothes on a clothesline out in the backyard. Anytime I came out of the house, this person next door was, they would jump up and go in the house and slam the doors. Bam! Used to take them because I was young, you know? I didn't know that I should might be in danger.
But then she came around.
Yeah, she finally saw that I wasn't gonna act like a heathen of some kind. She found out that I was intelligent.
Though their neighborhoods were mostly segregated, the school closest to both families was Glenn.
Which happened to be just a block and a half away from us, as opposed to the Negro school, which was on, across the railroad track, which ended up to be in about seven blocks. We would have to walk.
We walked to school then. Our elementary school, Glenn School, was about three blocks away. So I walked to school in the mornings.
Just before the start of school in 1957, Governor Clement's segregation laws were struck down by the federal court. So the city braced itself for the gradual integration plan, starting with the first grade. Glenn would be one of the elementary schools where clashes over integration would take place. Black families choosing to send their children to white schools were faced with the tough choice of whether or not to put themselves and their children on the front lines of the desegregation battle. Violent clashes had already happened in places like Clinton High School in east Tennessee. So black families organized neighborhood groups, and in some cases, they suffered the consequences.
Mr. Griffith was the leader in the East Nashville side because there were schools that were integrating all over Nashville. And in East Nashville, where we were, Glenn was the school that we were going to go to. And it was Mr. Malin Griffith?
Yes.
Malin? Malin Griffith, who sort of organized the parents. And he managed to get you and Daddy and Sinclair Lee, Mikey was his wife, but her name is Michelle Lee, to take their children, their six-year-olds, their first graders. We all had, all those families had first graders to go and integrate on that, on this particular side, at this particular school. Mary Griffith had been working at-- Uh, Mary Griffith had been working at Pet, I don't know if we're allowed to call the name, at the Pet Milk Company. And because of the, there were so many people who did not want this to happen, did not want integration to take place. They did all kinds of things to deter it. She was fired from her job. She was fired and therefore available to go. She lost her job behind it, behind the integration, trying to coerce some of the black parents to not do this. You'll lose your job if you do this. But of course, Malin went on, he...
He worked with the post office, so they couldn't bother him. So that was the difference there.
Daddy worked at the plantation club as a waiter there. And he, the manager, or the owner, whoever it was, had been, uh, they had talked to him.
Had been threatened that he should be fired. And he told him that, uh, he would not fire him, I'm not gonna do that. He's one of my better workers.
So he had a lot...
Which was outstanding, 'cause he didn't have to do that.
Right. We had a lot of help from the other side, so to speak, while the, including the policeman that voluntarily, you know, he didn't have to follow Daddy home to make sure he was safe, made sure he was not harassed or threatened in any way, because he was coming home after midnight. It would be after midnight, he would be coming home. And so, this policeman would make sure.
However, he was, uh, white.
Mm-hmm.
He was a white guy.
In August nineteen fifty-seven, Harold Street walked his daughter Lawanda and her friend Jackie to Glenn School to register for the first grade.
Uh, there were two children that I met on that day that were also being registered. I think her name was Sarah, and she was very, they were very nice. I never felt antagonized or, or threatened.
The Nashville Banner published photographs of Lawanda and Jackie meeting fellow white students for the first time, while outside the school, angry white parents argued with school superintendent W.A. Bass. It was only a sample of what was to come. Perhaps that is why, in addition to the policeman who escorted Harold Street home at night, Mr. Street also had neighbors looking out for his family.
Mr. Haley.
Uh, that told him that not to worry, because he'd be sitting out on the porch. He stayed over there across, diagonally across the street. And another gentleman I've, that lived right directly in front of us, said the same thing. Says, we'll be watching out, you don't have to worry.
Yeah, Mr. Haley was out there on the porch. I think he had his rifle.
Yeah.
That he'd sit in his swing and, and watch what was going on up and down the street.
On the night before the first day of school, violence broke out at elementary schools slated to be integrated. The Banner described one mob as irate and unruly. At Fair School, hundreds of whites protested, including children. A Banner photograph shows kids throwing rocks and bottles at two black men in a car. White supremacist John Casper had come to Nashville from New Jersey to lead the opposition to integration. That night, he urged crowds to pick at Hattie Cotton School, where one black child was enrolled. Arrests were made, and the violence was quelled that night. Chief of Police Douglas Hosey warned that agitators outside of schools the next morning would be arrested. The warning did not deter John Casper. He appeared at Glenn School and others on the morning of September ninth, the first day of school. The Nashville Tennessean reported that he urged the crowd of whites to keep their children at home rather than integrate, and some white parents did remove their children, especially after the black children began to arrive.
So the day came, I got dressed up, my mama let me wear my patent leather shoes, the, the kind you only get to wear to church. I got to wear a beautiful, my favorite dress that my grandmother, my step-grandmother had made for me, my purple dress with the lavender sash. And I got to wear the cam cam up under it, which was only preserved for Sundays and Sunday dresses. So I was, I was anxious and ready to go.
Nashville Banner photographs show black parents and their first graders walking through a gauntlet of jeering white protesters. One demonstrator's sign read, "Keep your kids at home." Another read, "Keep our schools white, KKKK." A flyer being passed out showed a black man and a white woman kissing, and warned of race riots and armed white citizens.
I remember, uh, a mother bringing her little boy, uh, holding his hand as he came to school. Uh, it was, uh, it was a pitiful thought that a mother had to do, uh, had to guard the child going to first grade.
Larry Britton is a retired news reporter, whom you can hear more from in episode one. In September nineteen fifty-seven, he was covering the protest for the Nashville Banner.
Several of those kids that did go to school left during the day, went back home.
Because of the angry crowd they encountered on registration day, Mr. Street had anticipated possible trouble.
Mom couldn't go. Why, Mom?
Well, you see, I had a little one right behind them. And so, my husband said, now, I don't know what I'm gonna have to do to protect Lawanda. Says, and so I can't try to protect you as well as a little one, just barely walking. So he told me to stay at home.
Lawanda, on the other hand, was so excited about finally attending school, she had a somewhat different perspective.
So my dad and I met up with Ms. Griffith, who, uh, Malin Griffith's wife, Mary, who was taking her little girl. Um, Malin couldn't go, he was a postal worker and he had to work. We started up the street, we got to the, uh, top of North Fifth and Cleveland, and there was a crowd of people waiting for us to cross Alicia and go on to the school. And they had signs that they were carrying that had the KKK, do not send your child, taunts, and, but it was a parade to me. I, I was happy as can be. I was completely oblivious to what was going on. Uh, Jackie, I think, knew a little more than I did. She was a little apprehensive, and if you see the pictures, you can see her face and my face. I'm happy as a lark, and she's biting her fingernails, you know, and, and walking.
And she was the daughter?
Of Malin Griffith. Mm-hmm. She was the daughter of Malin Griffith, and probably had heard, she had older brothers and sisters, and probably had heard a little bit more about, uh, the trouble that was being caused and the threats. That first day, it was, it, it, nothing happened. And I think, because we were so young, we were such small children, that the populace did not want to be seen as being mean or hateful to little children. So they stayed back. I think Casper was the only one that was sort of kind of ginning everybody up against it.
Nashville Banner photographs show Lawanda sitting in class on the front row, in her beautiful dress, her school satchel in her lap, ready for school.
I got there and I met friends. I had a wonderful first-grade teacher named Miss Elizabeth, who was very kind and very nurturing. Uh, we, we all loved her, all the students did. I had a classroom full of children who were just happy to be around other children. So they didn't care, you know, race did not come into it. Ms. Mary was the principal there, and she was very welcoming and very, uh, inclusive, you know, and friendly.
It was reported that attendance was down twenty-five percent at Glenn School. At Fair School, where two black students showed up, eighty-five percent of the white students were absent. Mr. Street's concerns about violence were borne out at other schools, such as Caldwell, where weapons were confiscated and protesters arrested. But the situation got much worse that night. The headline on the cover of the next morning's paper read, "Blast Rex School."
I'd got off from the shelf, and, uh, I was just putting my gun up, uh, in the closet, up on the high shelf so my kids couldn't get it. And about the time I done that, it's boom, and he knocked me always, halfway across the room.
Joe Casey is a retired Nashville police chief. He was a patrol officer at the time of the bombing. Today, he is ninety-two years old.
And I said, some of them blowed up, I don't know what it is. And then I got out from the porch, and I said, it's school, I think. So I took off up there, I didn't live far from it, about a half block. And just about the time I got there, the sergeant pulled up, and, but the whole, the northeast corner was blown out of the building.
The dynamite explosion at Hattie Cotton School, which stopped a clock at thirty-three minutes after midnight, shattered windows of homes and businesses in the east Nashville neighborhood, and it was heard as far away as Donaldson.
It was so loud, you could hear...
You could hear, you could feel it.
Well, over here.
I know what that was. Yeah, man, we get the crying.
Yeah. Damn, why they selected the newest school.
To blow up. It was only one little girl to go there, and a lot of, uh, students that originally were gonna go dropped out after that, 'cause Sinclair Lee's son, Junior, didn't go back. From that point on, my uncle was sleeping in the, in the front room, in the living room, with his father's, uh, hunting rifle, and the people across the street were on the lookout, you know, in case anything else happened. But once that happened, the mayor stepped in and said, this is gonna stop. Pick up anybody you see, put them away.
By seven o'clock in the morning, Nashville police officers were traveling all around trying to find someone, uh, who could be considered a suspect.
Larry Britton found that the police sometimes went beyond the law itself to find the culprits.
Detectives, uh, C.T. Campsley and Bill Summett brought in two, uh, young fellows. And I was standing outside the police station, and when he brought them to the police station, and, and they were standing near where I was, the young fellows were asked if they would, uh, take a lie detector test about, well, about they were involved in the bombing of Hattie Cotton. Both of them said they would. And I'm thinking, lie detector, we don't have a lie detector there, the police don't have a lie detector test. Well, anyway, they took them on in. And about fifteen, twenty minutes later, I was walking upstairs, uh, this old building, and I walked up the wooden steps. As I got to the top of, I looked down, and there was a roof, a large roof down there. I looked there, and there was this fella laying across a table. There was a police officer sitting on his legs, another officer was holding him down his waist. And there was a boat paddle, and the boat paddle was a lie detector test. They, they passed the lie detector test, but, uh, they did get, uh, a few licks before they did, well, police decided not to prosecute it further.
John Casper was also arrested as a suspect in the bombing, but he was eventually released. Police could not directly connect him or anyone else to the act of terrorism. The school bombing shocked the Nashville community, but it did not rally the populace against integration, as the white supremacists had apparently hoped.
After the bombing, uh, everything calmed down. It, it really calmed down, the people realized that with all of the carrying on that they did, that, uh, it only got a school blowed up, and fortunately, wasn't nobody in the school.
Though one black student did not return to Glenn after the bombing, Lawanda stayed, and gradually, things returned to normal for Glenn's students.
Within a few months, I was allowed to be able to walk home without the escort. You know, Daddy would take me and Jackie, both of us, pick us up, walk us back.
Ironically, however, Glenn School did not turn out to be what the Streets had expected.
Come to find out, after we got there, after I got there, that, um, we'd been living a lot, so to speak.
I wouldn't say we were living a lot, we were just missing form.
Right.
See, hadn't had the opportunity to compare.
And what did you discover at, at Glenn School?
That the books were just as raggedy as the books at Megs, because it was the low income neighborhood. Schools in the better neighborhoods got the better books, and when they got down to the low economic area, areas, they got what was left over after that, which were some of the raggedy books. And then, black schools got what was left over after that. Come to find out that, um, Glenn's books were just as raggedy as the books that were sent, being sent to Megs. The difference being, the teachers were also done that way. In the white world, the better teachers were sent to the better schools. The higher the income level, the better teachers were sent there. The, uh, school where we were, there were teachers there who barely had, who had high school diplomas, who'd never gone to college, and they were allowed to teach there, whereas our credentials in the black school, you had to get as high as you could possibly go to get picked, because it was very slim pickings as far as that opportunity to work, to be a teacher.
Because of this, after only one year at Glenn, the Streets decided to remove Lawanda and put her in Megs with her sister.
Of course, she told the world that it was because I was having nightmares, and I wanted to be with my sister, and, uh, that was what she could tell at that time. Uh, the world's, the, the white world would not have been able to accept, to have accepted that real explanation. We would have been considered uppity N people, and we would have been, there would have been retaliation.
Oh, yeah.
And we wanted to avoid all that, because we'd seen and heard a lot of the things that had gone on in other states and in other cities.
Though Lawanda has good memories of her year at Glenn, one incident while she was there forever altered her view of race.
I was walking home with, well, I was walking home by myself, and another little girl, little white girl, who still lived in the area. Her family hadn't managed to move out yet, but they were going in droves and as fast as they could. But her man, her family hadn't managed to, to, uh, move yet, and so she caught up with me, and we were skipping along and giggling, having fun, and then her sister caught up with her, her older sister caught up with her, popped her in the head and said, don't be walking with that N girl, and grabbed her by the scruff of the collar in the back of her coat and dragged her on around the corner and, you know, that was my first awakening, you know, and I felt really bad for her. I felt bad for her, because I knew I was not that N word, and she couldn't have been talking about me. But how mean could a sister that been, you know, and I felt bad. And then, but then I began to realize, something's up here.
I wanna go back to me.
And I'm different. You know, you learn it as you get older. Um, that sixth grader that grabbed the little girl who was walking home with me, she learned that. Her sister hadn't picked it up, because she was happy to have another child to skip home with, and that's all. She was young, she didn't pick that up, she had not been taught that yet, but the older sister had.
Lawanda also suspects that her friend Jackie had a different experience than her.
She had to stay, and of course, she stayed there long enough to see some of the ugliness, to experience some of the racial slurs. And plus, I'm pretty sure when she started, she was a little aware, 'cause she had older brothers and sisters who probably told her.
Told her what it was.
And since he was the leader, I'm pretty sure there were calls that came in. Her mother was fired, I'm sure she knew that that was a horrible thing.
When Jackie and a few other black children returned to Glenn the next school year, Debbie Cox also arrived for the first grade, continuing a family tradition.
You know, we knew everybody. My daddy went to Glenn School. And so, the principal had changed, but my daddy, my brother, and my sister all had the same first-grade teacher. She retired a couple of years before I started to school. My family knew the principal at the school, Ms. Mary Brent, and, uh, who was just this totally professional lady, little tiny lady that ruled with an iron fist. And, uh, my first-grade teacher lived across the street from us.
A white neighbor of the Cox family thought that six-year-old Debbie needed some advice for attending an integrated school.
I didn't really know anything about all this that was going on. Now I do, of course, but I didn't back then. But one day, I went, went over to a neighbor's house to visit, and she- and she was, we were talking about starting school, I was getting ready to start first grade, it was in the summer of 1958, and schools had been integrated the year before, and she was asking me if I was excited, and I said yes, and then she used a very ugly term to tell me not to, not to sit next to one of those little black children, but she didn't say black, and she said, and if they make you do that, spit on them. Well, I thought, boy, I can be really tough, and that's, you know how a kid is, so I went marching home to my mama, and I said, when I go to school, if they make me sit next to a little black kid, only I used the lady's ugly term, and I said, I'm gonna spit on them. And my mother was very calm all the time, but she turned around, and I kind of saw fire in her eyes, and she reached out and grabbed me by the shoulders and pulled me close, and she said, what did you say? And I repeated it, a little less boldly, and mama said, where did you hear that? And I told her the neighbor's name, and she, she pulled me close to her, and she said, let me tell you something, young lady, you'd never, you will never spit on anyone. We're talking about innocent little children just like you, how would you like someone to spit on you? And I'm, I'm just, I'm shocked and silent, and she said, you are not better than anyone, and no one's better than you, but you are not better than anyone. Well, I was, while I was still sort of wondering what she was gonna do, because I knew she was really angry, she went to the phone and she called the neighbor, and she told her, don't you ever tell my child to be hateful or to be mean to anyone. She said, you go to church every time the doors are open, have you ever read your Bible?
Debbie listened to her mother and ended up making some new friends.
There were some black children, I think, a little girl and two boys in my first grade class. I was past what I had been told and what mama said to me, although I never forgot it, and I don't remember the little girl's name, I don't know, the little boys were Sammy and Nathan, and I do remember them. Sammy was a little slight, tiny little boy, Nathan was a bigger kid, and they were, you know, they were just kids, but Nathan liked me, and he gave me a little ring, and I took it home. I didn't realize the significance that might have to some people, that a little black child was, boy was giving a ring to a little white girl, but I took it home, I was real proud of it, and I showed it to mom, and she thought it was cute, she was not upset about it, so I never knew that anybody might be upset about it then. Like now, when I think about it, you know, I see what other people might have said about it, or even me being so friendly with Nathan, but I kept in touch with him all through, we went all the way through school, through high school together, and I had a lot of friends who were black and white at Glenn's school, we didn't, we were not neighbors, not near neighbors, so after school, I went back to my neighborhood and the people who lived around me, and they went back to their neighborhood, but they were close by. I think when you talk about the race thing back then, I don't think it was something most children, unless they came from homes where it was really discussed, were aware there was a race problem, just didn't think about it. I didn't, I didn't think about the fact that I didn't see very many black people either, but it was just normal. So the whole matter of race to a child was not a matter, it was not. We were just kids having fun, and as we grew up, we started to see the differences and learn what, what happened when the schools were desegregated, and seeing photos of the angry people, and to this day, I don't understand that, but it certainly happened.
If racism is something that we learn, something that is taught to us, then perhaps the stories of these children indicate that the biggest responsibility lies in the home. Lawanda believes that the simple act of getting to know one another personally, as Debbie and Nathan did, can have a big impact.
We got to know each other, that's what it amounted to, you know, we stopped listening to the stereotypes that we were told about each other, you know, white folks will do so-and-so to you, black folks will do so-and-so to you, when we stopped listening to all of that, and actually learned each other, that it began to, it began to calm down, you know, we got to know each other, and all the stereotypes started to fade.
Dr. Lovett made a similar observation, quoting novelist and social critic James Baldwin.
When a group of white friends said to Baldwin, he had returned from France to help with the civil rights movement, with the African-American civil rights movement, and they said, James, what can we do to help? Big auditorium of people, they were supporting James Baldwin, they loved him, you know, and great poet and all that, and James said, as long as you consider yourself white, you make me black. And he said, that's the way you can help the civil rights movement. History is not the same, I used to tell my students who say, you know, history repeats itself, and I always told them, no, we repeat history. History has never repeated itself, too many variations of history, so don't worry, it never repeats itself. But we repeat history, and we repeat history because we don't learn the lessons of history, you know, so we go back doing the same thing.
Both Lawanda Harley and her mother, Serena Street, are retired schoolteachers. Today, Lawanda teaches music and gives talks about her experience with integration. Debbie Eser Cox is retired from the Metropolitan Nashville Archives, but continues to research and write about Nashville history. We're grateful to them, and to Dr. Bobby Lovett, Larry Brenton, Joe Casey, and Donnie Street for their participation in this episode. Thanks also to the Tennessee State Library and Archives for the legislative audio clips, and to the Nashville Public Library for the photographs and interview space. Visit the Civil Rights Room at the Downtown Library for more on this topic, including books and documentaries. Thank you for listening to this episode of Nashville Retrospect. For more information about the stories you heard, including photographs, see the show notes on the podcast webpage, which you can find a link to at nashoretrospect.com. You can also email your comments to nashretroshow@gmail.com. This show was written and produced by me, Alan Forkum. Stay tuned for the next one, and in the meantime, don't forget to pick up your copy of The Nashville Retrospect.